Good afternoon, everybody. It is, this is Bill Canada, Custer County Chairman on the Board of Commissioners. This is a board meeting for a special board meeting. This is Monday, November the 10th, 2025. And it's 12, what'd you say it was? Thirty-two, thirty-three?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five now. So please silence your phones. I've got to do mine, as I mentioned. And this meeting will be recorded on Zoom and on YouTube. We'll call this meeting to order and let's silence phones and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for the invocation. Our Lord Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this great valley and we thank you for these wonderful people. The people today with a special mission to help understand our issues today before us with our food program that we've got. And we want to make sure that people that need the food get the food and hope for your guidance during the process. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Canada.
Here.
Commissioner App.
President.
Commissioner Vogel-Song.
Here.
County Attorney Dan Slater.
Here.
BLCC Admin Caitlin Moleback here and clerk to the board Kelly Carr, who is present.
Thank you, Kelly. Hey, Dan, can you hear us clearly?
Yes, yes. Kelly's kind of faint, but other than that, yes, I can hear you pretty well.
Okay, amend the agenda. I don't think we have any or should we have?
I don't have any.
Okay. No unfinished business? And we'll get right to the point.
Are you going to do audience?
Oh, let's, who's online?
Online Elliot Jackson and John Price.
Elliot Jackson, John Price, got them?
I don't keep track. I'm just.
Just in case they come up. Okay, thank you. Okay. There's audience introduction here, back over here. Vicky?
Vicky White.
Human Services Director.
Duncan Tatum, Custer County Veterans Officer, James Kilber.
Richard Soss, Commander, American Legion, spokesman, sir.
Christie Shren, Senior Vice Commander, American Legion.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll get to the point. I called this meeting for a reason. And the reason is to make sure that we understand the position of where the SNAP funds are today. The subsistence allowances that we have for the county. We know, all know the government's been shut down, federal government's been shut down, and of course, all the programs therein are impacted. We also heard this morning that they're opening it up, maybe. But even if they opened it up tomorrow, when the SNAP funds would get here is another issue. We'll talk about more about that. Also, there's also more noise in the system because when apparently Governor Polis had decided to fund it for the state. When, for whatever reason, doesn't matter, he decided he would fund it entirely. And then when the government started talking about opening it back up, then there was a discussion on, oh, should I do it or shouldn't I do it? He's going to do it anyway. Well, if he does it anyway, how does that impact funds in the future? So we can have that discussion a little bit too. But the main reason is getting back to our own people. And it's our duty, the commissioners, I felt, to at least help lead the charge to get it done and get the right people. The only one that's not here right now is Rich. I would have liked to have him. He's busy with something, but he'll be here pretty soon. And I wanted to put a nucleus together of people to discuss it and then come up with a plan and a process that would involve others. Like the churches, perhaps, and citizens and other things. And how would we go about doing it? Because the issue is this, and I'll get the exact number from Vicky. How many families are on SNAP? Just a family number, Vicky.
So I don't have a families number.
Or the?
So I have two right now. It's about the end of October because I don't have November numbers until the end of November. We have 250 by the cases.
Fifty-five, 255 cases?
I have, out of those cases, 310 are adults and 127 are children. We're a total of 437 children and adults that we provide SNAP benefits.
So the grand total would be about, what is that, 255?
437 adults and children that we serve.
So that's the total, grand total is 400. At first, I thought there was a thousand or something you'd mentioned.
Well, that was going off the top of my head, but I looked at my reports this weekend. So we issued in October in SNAP benefits, $78,642, just from the month of October.
So 78,000, say it again.
$78,642.
And that's for 437 recipients. So divide that out. That's like a thousand bucks each, roughly.
It's going to be done because we have individuals that are on with their children and then we have families. So.
So that's the number of people. Could be more.
It's going to, it's going to vary per person depending on your income and their situation.
Okay, that helps. Okay. And the other reason I want her to be here is because she is the only one that can distribute those funds. Because it's confidential who's on the SNAP program. You can't use names. And so ideally, you would like to have cash to be, you know, the ideal thing. Which brings up questions of how do you get, we can go out and gather cash. We come up a lot of ways to do that. For example, with the veterans alone, I think, how many veterans we have in the county, Dominic?
I think it was 581.
581. And if each veteran coughed up 50 bucks, there's probably a bit of money there that could be useful. And I know the veterans would want to support something like this, probably. No, can't speak for them. That's why I asked you all, Richard, to be here and the veterans commander as well. He can't, he wasn't, isn't here. And then, so the whole point of the meeting then would be to discuss, what are the options and what can we do? And if we were to do it, it could be a bucket of worms if we go and raise the money and then we get, and of course, you could write the check to the county. Or we could put it into the county treasury and transfer it into Vicky's account. And if we did that, and then Polis decides to fund this, how do we reimburse it back? Okay, that would be a question for Dan. Or, or if we, if we didn't do that, how is the state affected by him wanting to distribute the funds? And then does that mean the federal government would withhold the next bunch? I don't know. In addition, when would that, when should it be distributed?
I don't know. So I've not received anything from the state this morning. I know that, I know that they're supposed to be making decisions today. I believe in the government. I've been watching it all weekend. But I know that they're supposed to have some decisions.
The only thing I think they decide is they're going to have a vote to decide whether to open it.
Yeah, because the previous one was just a test vote.
Right.
And I did have some ideas on this, this program that we're talking about that we could possibly do, so I don't know.
Okay, we'll get into that in just a second. When would it, when would you have gotten it for this month's distribution? Would it be in your fund now?
The way this SNAP gets distributed is based off a person's last digit of their social security number. So it goes from zero to nine. So if their, if their last is a zero, it would have been on the 10. If it was a one, it would have been on the first. So the first of the 10 is when the SNAP benefits are issued.
So we've already missed them for the month of November. Okay. Have you had any calls?
Yes.
People whining? Are they worried?
I'm just asking if their benefits are going to be found for the month of November.
So they're happy getting it anytime during November, sort of what you're getting out of that?
That's what I'm telling them, is that it could be anytime in November or I don't know.
You've had a couple of calls.
Yeah, we just, I mean, there is, what, and you haven't gotten, I mean, I see the news articles. But what's, what's the latest from the state and what's the latest from the feds that you're getting? And of course, that's.
They're up and down, is all I'm going to say. Because I received from the state as of last week, we were not issuing. And everything was being put on hold. Then it was either going to issue. Certain states started issuing right away. So about 30,000 Coloradans received their SNAP benefits. Some received a small portion, not their full portion. Then they went ahead and oops, can't do that, cut it off again. So there are only about 30,000, is the last that I heard.
That got for November?
32,000.
That got 32,000 cases.
Received some.
They did.
That's, that's only 30,000.
But none up here?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't know about it here.
Really? So that gets distributed not physically by you pushing some buttons, somebody from the state does it because of what the data is that you need?
To download.
Okay, got it. Okay, that makes sense. And hey, Dan, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you hear what she said?
Yeah, I heard all that. Yeah.
Given that, then i- is it possible to, for the county, let's get data on the table. Can the county donate money to this, to a fund? And if they did, how would you put it in? Would you send it to the state? Vicky, how does it get to the state if we, if we raise the money?
No. So my thought on this was if we raised money, and then we would purchase food. And then do a.
Food distribution, a food drive?
Distribution for just the SNAP recipients on that. I mean, you could go, I mean, literally, you could go probably further with it because what if we have, you know, in my mind, I think of disasters or where this happens again. Or, you know, what if we have, you know, families, you know, a section of Custer County where, you know, a whole group of people, you know, have fought, you know, fired, a fire and people needed it. So I, you know, in my mind, it's, it's like a fund that the county holds. And then we ask permission when something happens like this of the commissioners to say, okay, this is what we want to do.
Okay, now hold it right there because that's a good point. How would you do that? This is for SNAP recipients, not everybody. And how would you cut, make that cut then to keep it confidential? Couldn't?
Well, we have to distribute the food. That's why I'm saying.
So you would actually call the people up to, okay, all right, that makes.
I posted on Facebook, it's for SNAP recipients only. We're doing a special distribution on such and such date. And then they could come and give.
You would give them the date that that person could come? Or those people would know they could come? Okay, Dan, is it po, is it legal for the county to spend money on food and put it in a bank?
There is a statute that's pretty well specifically outlines this. It's 3017101. And, you know, the following statutes. It allows the county to establish a general assistance program. Or temporary general assistance program for, for persons in the county.
And we can constrict it to those specific people. We can.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can indicate what eligibility requirements you want to have. They can include eligibility requirements such as residency in the county, things like that. I know that there are some other counties that have been discussing this. I think Lake County is one that's, that's looking at this as well right now.
Recommend, and we would set up a separate account.
You have, the statute requires that you set up a separate account, a separate fund in the county budget for this. And you have to do this by ordinance. So it's not something that the commissioners could do today. You would have to go through the process of, of adopting an ordinance, which requires, I believe, publication or, we do so a few ordinances in the county. Kelly can probably give me, give you a better sense of how long it takes to get through, you know, what we have to do to get.
Okay, another, another data point then would be, today, the reason this is a special meeting, so we can make a decision, the three of us can for the county. And we could decide that we're going to do this. And then at that point, we would have to then decide in the meeting, we'd have to write an ordinance to get ready for that. And then in the meantime, we could still ask people, we could start setting up the process. I think if we identified the fact that we want to do it and use our volunteers here to, that's why we have you guys here to figure out other avenues to raise it. Is that okay with you, Dan? Would that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Vicky?
And the other thing I would, I would say is, and I know this is about food. You know, I know there's a food program that currently is in operation in the county on a, not, it's not a, I think it's only maybe a once a month thing. But maybe you could work in, volunteers could maybe.
Karen, the problem is that's for, I don't know how they select it, but they, they take and do big boxes of food. They actually get ready. They could help that maybe we could use their distribution process with Vicky could help maybe set that up.
Do a distribution here at DHS.
Yeah, you do that anyway.
We do. So my question was this. I have an agency that contacted Sarah Pearlson. And then Sarah forwarded a community email. I don't want to say anything about.
She was going to be here today too.
No, she's off today.
She's off today.
But I did have an agency that community has stepped up and donated already a thousand dollars to them. And we're going to sit down, so I don't know how that affects things as well.
For this specific reason?
For this specific, yeah.
Okay, well, that, it affects it because that's why we're here.
Yeah, I mean, it's a thousand dollars already that's been, the possibility of we could start out with bad amounts. I don't know.
Well, that's a big deal because. And I don't know, can you get food on a break? Do you get discount food? Or how do you buy it? Is it just grocery store stuff? What do we do? How do you go about it? What's the plan if we did it?
Well, we have to buy it in bulk.
I know. But what, do you have a list of how you do that? But Richard's been anxious.
I would think twice and have more discussion about distributing food. Because it's a big process and we're going to keep all the food. And I think it might.
Speak up.
I think it might be more beneficial to have funds available that you could distribute upon request to SNAP people. And then just fund their SNAP card, basically.
Can't fund the card.
Not the card specifically, but have a card that you give them.
Make up a card of our own.
Spend of their own to assist them with the need and the financial need. Because everybody's food needs are different. So you have to have a huge variety of different foods and people to disperse those foods. With veterans, you can send them to us and we have veterans trust fund money that we can help veterans in families that are in need. You could tell us the specific amounts that they get monthly or whatever, and we might be able to fund that 100%. Well, I know you can't do that, but if they were to say, and you were to say to the American Legion, you need X amount of money to fund a veteran's SNAP bill. It's usually, I would imagine, what is that number divided by them all? So, I mean, even if we had to give them all a thousand dollars, how many veterans are there? I think the veterans community we could take care of. It's, it would, it would be, and, and what I would suggest within the veterans community is to make the request to the legion. Through either Dominic or the legion itself, and we will.
You work with VFW?
Yes, because we work with the VFW too, and they have trust fund money available too. Theirs will be activated, I believe, by the end of the month. Their received money was in a CD. Their seed money was in a CD and it's coming to you, and so they'll, they will be able to, uh in very, very near future, be able to assist, but the American Legion, we have a trust fund with seventy-five thousand dollars, and I think there's about fifty-some thousand dollars left. So we have money that we could speci- help the veterans. I think we can help every veteran on that list.
Okay, time out there for a second, I got a question on that, but Dominic, do you, do you have a comment on what you just said?
Yeah, so with with the Legion, they can do grocery cards. Um obviously Vicki can't disclose how much that individual is receiving or who's receiving, but if a veteran comes to Legion and says, I've not received my SNAP benefits, that's them disclosing themselves. That's that's legal, they can. They can go to Legion and say, I didn't get my SNAP benefits, can I get some gas, uh grocery cards or gas cards, whatever they need, um and they can, they can help. But the caveat to that is it's reimbursed. So once they hit their their seed money amount, then Christie's gotta reach back out to the state and get that money reimbursed. So if there's, if there's a reimbursement pending and there's no seed money in the pot, then they can't release that stuff.
They can't use that pot because of the, it has to be reimbursed.
Yes, because it's it's.
And we're.
They're coming out of pocket and getting reimbursed by the state.
We're gonna add three to five thousand dollars more to our seed money account. Right now, we have about twelve thousand five hundred in our seed money, and then we get reimbursed by the state, but we're going to, uh Christie and I are making a motion with the Legion to add at least five thousand dollars to that fund so that, because sometimes the state predominantly is on it and we get reimbursed on a regular basis. But it's been lagging, probably because of all the things that are happening politically.
Right.
Um but we're still getting reimbursed. So what we're gonna do is we're, uh, we haven't told you about this, because we've just been talking about it the last few days since this has come up, that we're going to increase the amount that is in the seed, um like, and so the, for for the veterans, we could take care of, and they don't have to disclose that they're coming to us because of SNAP. So if they don't want to disclose that to us, they can just come to us and say, hey, listen, you know, we we're in need of assistance. Um so they don't have to disclose.
Let's make sure it's really clear, because you implied that it's legal to, if he can, if he told him he was on SNAP with him, I guess.
Sure, if they disclose.
That's true, right? If they disclose.
If they disclose themselves, that's all that.
So let me ask this.
You won't ask them.
Can you, do you know who the veterans are?
Yeah.
So, see, it's hard to, hard to.
So I I will put, to call out uh uh three social media um about what we talked about, that veterans and we have food for.
On their currently receiving food subsistence.
Don't have to, just say, if you're in need, contact.
And I I can mention that here because of this, the cr- the situation with the SNAP benefits, if you're in need, you know, I'll word it so that it's both way, that people know that they can come regardless, and widows too, by the way, and widowers. Um we do have a a Veterans Affairs and Re-Abolatation Fund.
And that's all year long.
Well, why, uh, okay, but but then you you could end up doing, I'll get to you, Jim. You could end up with a lot more people wanting more money or more subsistence than than you would have normally gotten, it seems to me.
And we're we're good to catch.
Okay.
We're, we'll do that.
Well, what I care about, making sure is we get the SNAP people covered. Is it illegal to s- to ask a veteran to go and this, uh to go get your SNAP uh money, tell the commander that, or acknowledge that you are on SNAP? Is that not legal, probably?
No, we can, we don't have, it's.
There's no rule.
There's no rule.
I just want to make sure that if, in order for us to make sure that all SNAP recipients are covered.
Yeah, we could, well, there's two issues here um that our Legion can, was gonna address, because we have veterans that we can assist, um and then we can assist widows and widowers. Um but and so with with the funds that we currently have. Now, the Legion, um we both discussed that we would also like to help uh people who are not veterans. So one thing, one of the things that we could do would, um and we would volunteer to, she and I would, to organize um a a food drive for people to come and drop off food. We'll put a call out to the community, and we'll just collect as much food as we can. We'll organize somewhere like the school parking lot or something where people can come and drop off food. And then, um I would, didn't want to, to volunteer Dominic, but there, that is one place that we can put food. And then wherever else that we could store food, we could store some at the Saddle Club, and, you know, if it's containers and if it's things like this.
Vicki has a place too.
So we could, wherever, we could do that over a one or two day period um to where people, in this community, we house the veteran who is homeless, and we put a call out to the community, and within twelve hours, we have a brand new couches, we have his whole home furnished, people bought gift cards of, and financial cards and photos, we were taking stuff to Care and Share after. So I think we put the call out to the community that need food and that we're raising it for, you know, the community um that, and we would, so we would be willing to do that. One of the things that we we should take into consideration is that this crisis currently won't last forever, thank goodness. However, like she said, it could happen again, or certain situations could happen again. So to have a a this and and to put something like this together, so we have a protocol for if it happens in the future, and then with the um just reading and taking notes on how we can do things better. So those are the things that the Legion can do. Currently, we have about fifty thousand dollars that's reimbursable from the state, and the veterans of foreign war, don't quote me on this, but it's my understanding that this month, their seed money will be, come due, um that, and they will have thirty thousand dollars available in the Veterans Trust Fund that they manage to assist veterans. So let's get the word out there that veterans, widows, and widowers, we have food sources for them. And then just to recap, um to assist the the community, the Legion would uh put, put together a food drive on a day and ask the community to reimburse.
Okay, one point, and Jim, uh Vicki, uh if we, if we put the word out to donate food and use your facility, would you be able to handle that?
Yeah, absolutely.
And you would be able to get to the people that are on the program?
Yes.
Directly?
Yeah.
So we would know they are covered for sure, and you all could raise the the food, okay. Okay, Jim?
Uh first of all, I haven't heard anybody um state what their understanding in the current SNAP program is and how it's managed.
Okay.
So um so uh like in October, what happens?
October.
What happened?
Go ahead, tell them, Vicki.
What, what do you mean in October?
Tell them the process of how SNAP.
There's this federal program supplemental nutritional assistance. How does that money get to your, to get to the distribution of the people in Custer County?
In October?
Well, how does it normally do it?
Oh, I'm sorry, just, I mean, from the state, uh the EBT providers, and I don't remember who they are, downloaded on to people's cards.
So the money comes from the federal government, the USDA, to the state, to the card. You don't have anything to do with distributing it, other than, other than.
She certifies it.
Refer, uh 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 authorizing based upon qualifications of the people.
Right.
Okay, so the county has nothing to do with SNAP, other than that.
That's right.
So um the people in the county, based upon the current status of the news, should be getting at least sixty-five percent of their benefits in the next day or two, because that's required. And the hope is that this week, the Senate will put through the compromise, and the House will pass it, and hopefully the President will sign it, and then a hundred percent will be coming in.
Doctor, do we know for sure? I I'm not sure I uh understand that sixty-five percent is solid.
Sixty-five percent is court ordered.
The sixty-five percent was court ordered, but then there was the Supreme, the Supreme Court said, put a stop to all of that.
Yeah, the Supreme Court put a stay on that order.
Let Dan talk to you, Dan.
Yeah, this, yeah, uh was two days ago, I think, or maybe yesterday, the Supreme Court put a stay on that sixty-five percent order and 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 it's now.
They put a stay on a hundred percent, Dan.
No, they put a stay on everything.
Well, that's brilliant.
Yeah.
Nonetheless, it is, okay, and so that's why it's important to understand the process, she said that earlier. And so our, her job is to certify it, then her job is to make sure that that list is current and that those people got it. Unfortunately, uh you don't distribute the food directly.
Correct.
Most of the time, they they do. So if we were to do that, that would be the difference here, would be she would have to make sure that the SNAP people got in here, got it, if they don't get funded.
Well, the, I wasn't quite finished in my comments, but.
Go ahead.
You already mentioned the Community Sharing Program, which does take food donations, takes uh card donations, et cetera. So they can take all of that and um meet it out. And the other thing is that while SNAP has certain income levels and whatnot, people above those income levels that don't get SNAP are also hurting.
Sure.
So, I mean, to, in my mind, if you're going to set up a countywide program for general food assistance, you can't ignore other people in need besides the SNAP, the people that lost their SNAP.
Well, that was my point initially, but but that.
So so to answer that question, so initially, my thought was the SNAP recipients, because they haven't received anything, um and they need that criteria, but I was hoping for some type of fund for later on down, you know, for other opportunities.
For the SNAP fund, yeah.
Um because of that reason, because you have people that don't um, don't qualify for SNAP, but they still are hurting for food, and that's why we do the partial distribution here as well.
Right.
Um.
And in fact, Jim, uh we do, we have been known to to reach out to the community and do that as a county once in a while. The the Care and Share has been around for a long time, just to make up the difference.
Well, that's where probably were all the SNAP people.
That's, well, maybe so.
That's probably one of the ones.
Yeah, so they received extra money at the Care and Share that was attributed to SNAP and the downfall. And so I think everybody got a portion of that, that money that they received, that extra money. Um and I don't know who uh received the the extra feed that was distributed on the extra distribution at the other site. Um but, you know, I can't, because they came and spoke to me, and I told them I could not give them a list. Um we hadn't been in a plan, but then that plan changed, and they ended up distributing to anyone who who came to that distribution. So, you know, I still have people who have not received their SNAP benefits, and, you know, and they're asking what are they gonna do, so.
Okay. All right, hold that. Uh Elliot has a question online.
Hi, yeah, um Bill, can you hear me?
Yep, you don't have to yell, it's coming from the computer. Well, well.
Okay, far out. Um I'm asking mostly because uh in my capacity reporting, not just for the Tribune, but also for the Valley News, um I'm trying to keep track of all, you know, of all the the food drive efforts around the county, and I know that the Wet Mountain, I I know that the Community Foundation is also, you know, out there soliciting donations and trying to kind of coordinate, like, information, like who's doing what, like for Thanksgiving and stuff like that. Um so if the county does set something up, are, you know, is there any way that you can kind of reach out to that? Or it just seems like it's really great to see all of these individual efforts, but um I think it might be good, you know, if everybody kind of knows what everybody else is up to. Um so I was wondering if you were gonna maybe reach out to the Community Foundation as well, once you decide what you're doing, to let them know, so they can kind of put that information out. Um and of course, I'll be trying to put that information out as well.
Okay, thank you, Elliot, good, good question and good, thank you for volunteering. That was, I mentioned that earlier, the the point of this meeting was to come up with the big picture and then get somebody like, I appreciate you, the veterans standing tall here and and being sort of a central point to get a process in place. Uh but I had intended that all the churches in this county ought to be involved, all the other organizations you've mentioned, the foundations that are there, the Care and Share, the Lighthouse Pregnancy Center, whatever, uh all those.
I'm sure if they were asked, they would.
Sure, and that's what I thought, and I thought we could probably waste, raise a whole bunch of money. Uh and that's what had me worried, that it has to be, in my view, because I started off on the SNAP thing, because that's the issue right now. Not to say that there's not a lot of deserving people that can't make a living up here, but uh that was the intent.
But if the people that were asking to donate or whatever, if it's a, just a standard emergency assistance fund and not identified as a group, would that be it?
I think that is a good solution to his point that he brought up, which is valid.
Let them know what's going.
No one's excluded.
Yeah, and and then uh be up to to Vicki to make sure that the SNAP people, if they're, you know, it's their problem. They don't go for it, then they lose, I guess, is what it would be, it's their problem, not to go.
Just make them aware.
Sure, the awareness is.
I just worry about the abuse, I worry about people that.
Well, that's why she's there.
That's why you can't just give out money because they would have.
Let's say, ah, she is giving out food, but it's, can that be abused too? Uh how do we?
It can't.
Could go to the grocery store and buy, buy lottery tickets.
So when they get their SNAP, their SNAP benefit.
Yeah, what are the, what are the rules? Let's explain that and make sure everybody's on the sheet, uh music. They can't buy wine, they can't buy tickets from a lottery, they can't buy cigarettes.
They can't buy anything but food.
Right.
That's why it's on the EBT card.
Yeah, that's why it's on the EBT card, but. And I, and I think it should be, whatever fund should be available for.
I I like that idea.
And I think it should, and I think it needs to be something that, you know, if it occurs, and we need to do these things, it needs to be brought to the board, and the board has to approve it before funds even get distributed.
Yeah, we gotta get, we gotta set it up.
I really do.
Because you, it's.
Now you have control.
Yeah.
So um, again, if you go to the idea of soliciting donations of food and cash money into a general um emergency uh support fund, whatever you want to call it. That the county's administering, then would it be wise to take that money and uh provide it to the current organizations that are already doing the distribution that exists?
To have identified people.
So for instance, the one that Elliot men- mentioned, the food food sharing thing, they can take all that money and buy food and then distribute food. So, I mean, you you don't want to create a whole nother.
Organization.
A whole nother bureaucracy to try to figure out how to get the resources to a place to distribute what you're trying to distribute.
I think modeling the Veterans Trust Fund and also the DSO Trust Fund and the Veterans Foreign War Trust Fund, all they have an administrator of that fund. It only takes one person. They don't have to have an office, they don't have to be.
Right, it's just a control point.
Someone who, the gatekeeper.
Okay, how do you keep uh people from Pueblo coming up and taking it? How do you stop that?
Well, and you have, you have to state that.
You you have. My word of mouth is gonna go, we're getting this food bank here and there.
You you'd have to state it, that it is specifically for.
For Custer County only.
And then they would have to, like, get a library card, show a bill or prove.
They had a electric bill or whatever.
Well, but have a little more faith, Pueblo's probably gonna do the same thing for them, but.
Yeah, I'm just.
So.
Well, we got, but see, there's a Fremont County line and uh Custer County is blurred, because a lot of people come up here that are veterans, because we got a great Veterans Office.
Yeah.
Uh they, if we got a good Care and, uh back, food bank up here, they're gonna come in.
So the, could, we just be specifying guidelines for qualified for it.
Must be a county.
What's Care and Share do today? Do we know?
They know who's coming, I believe, in advance, even. They have a list.
There's a.
So maybe there's a process set up to ID them.
So we do the Care and Share as well, um and uh there's certain guidelines for Care and Share for people to come pick up.
To to be. To be, to be fair, the, the remoteness of Custer County probably helps here. No, you gotta think, who's gonna spend thirty dollars on gas for twenty dollars in groceries?
Right. Right. Good point.
That's why you have a gatekeeper, someone to process.
And we, I mean, we have to ask them their name, their, I mean, their, they're in our system. We actually have the Care and Share system where we have to enter in who came and picked up food that they, for Care and Share. Yeah, for this.
There's already a system.
We talked earlier about this, about people abusing it. They are going to, they are gonna go from this organization.
Oh, sure.
This organization, that organization, they will.
That's the other.
I mean, we see it with our better trust fund and the.
Right now, the SNAP stuff goes only to the SNAP people.
Right. So we're talking about the big picture.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so what we would want to authorize today would be the fact that we want to establish.
Emergency assistant.
An emergency assistant.
Fund.
Program of some kind. That would encompass all the county.
Correct.
Organizations.
Is that a motion?
I don't know. I'm trying to get something that we can handle on, because we gotta, if we're gonna, here's the real reason, it, the county, it's a county of o- offices executing the SNAP program. The county's accountable for that. And if we want to have the county administer that, that's, that'd be part of it, then we have to authorize that.
Well, if, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna have, probably have to do that by ordinance.
Exactly.
So what I'm hearing, what I, what I guess I, I'm trying to get an impression from, from the board today would be, is that something you want me to draft for first reading on, on Wednesday?
Yes.
I would say yes, oh, yeah.
Yeah, Vicky.
Can I, I would love to hear from Lucas and Paul, their father.
Yeah, it's, we're getting to the point of discussion, we haven't had a motion.
Okay.
That's why I asked that question.
There, there is a lot of details to work out, um, in all of this. And I like Vicky's point about if we would have a snowstorm that would severely impact the arrival of food here or fire, having, uh, kind of our own food bank here, especially with the grocery store, being built when there was only about two thousand citizens in Custer, makes a little bit of sense. Everything would have to be administered through her office. Once we start doling out to different programs that are out there that are additionally doling it out, it only increases the workload of the transparency and who did it go to. And, and did it actually get to those who actually need the food, who, who, um, but there's a lot of details to work out here. I think this is, this is a lot bigger conversation than this hour that we have here.
Right.
For just reading through the first time of an ordinance on Wednesday, and we still don't know what's going to happen, um, and, and it could all of a sudden, they're back to fully funded.
So maybe the, maybe the motion then is really to authorize Vicky to work, uh, with the team and come up with a process that we could consider to make an ordinance or.
Yeah, possibly.
Something's gotta get started today, or, or we're just, we're just wasting time.
Right, but we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about immediate needs of those folks that are affected by the shutdown. That, we can simply do a food drive, have it, people drop off stuff here, Vicky can distribute, and her staff can distribute to those people that are directly.
Does that need an ordinance, Dan? It doesn't, doesn't?
No, 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 no.
The other thing we're talking about is this fund and the ordinance, that's, that's.
That's, that's different.
That's the law.
Yeah, so I'm trying, we're trying to do everything at once.
Right. So I think if we're addressing what the immediate need is, the immediate need is take care of those folks that are affected by the SNAP. Got it. So if we just set up the food drive, put it on social media, if you want to donate, if you can donate, bring goods to the courthouse and we can store it, and then Vicky can set up the distribution. That takes care of the immediate.
Yeah, and you can come to the next meeting with the status of that, and then, uh, we could also, you could be talking and what would be the next process to help Dan develop a ordinance, maybe get with Dan and toss it around.
So the immediate need is what people already have to.
Well.
So you just want to add to it.
No, that what's not happening is there's no money going to the people on SNAP.
No, because there is, there is money and food going to the current distributors thereof, which gets to the people on SNAP.
Eventually.
Not eventually, today.
No, it's not happening today.
Of course it is. Democrats have already done it.
Uh, Silver Cliff had their, uh, food drive last week, Tuesday, if I remember.
Silver Cliff.
That's, that's, that's the food drive. I'm talking about for SNAP.
It gets to the people that have lost their SNAP benefits.
Oh, that's right, that's right. That's a backfill, you're right.
So that, that is what Dominic was just talking about, is backfilling.
Backfill it for now, yes.
Now, the, the secondary thing would be having a, instead of an EBT card, have a CBT card, Custer.
Sure.
Card.
Or, uh, or just the food itself is what he's talking about. Like you, the.
But for the immediate thing, I mean, what you're talking about really is the county getting behind, um, supporting and encouraging everybody in the county to listen to all the other people as well that are asking for backfill, if you will. That sounds like, that sounds like a resolution.
Well, that's the ordinance.
Well, I was thinking a resolution to put out now that says, the Board of County Commissioners recognizes the shortfall, blah, 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 and we strongly encourage all the good, good God-driven people in Custer County to reach in your pockets and your cupboards and donate food where you can and make a list of who's accepting it.
That's.
No, I think, I think you're, I think you've hit the nail on the head, James. Very much so.
So if, if.
And we are just encouraging our people, hey, we, we are in a time of need, and we got some people in need, and let's help out.
Yeah.
Real simple.
Yeah.
You see on all of social media right now, people saying if you're in need, we can help.
Yep, there's people that are here.
I mean, even individual organizations.
Yeah.
So, so that's a resolution that we can.
You could do that almost today.
Tomorrow.
Or tomorrow, or Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, Wednesday, we can do that. And then in the meantime, if there's an ordinance necessary for the big picture, we can discuss that.
Might not, might take some phone calls, reach out to find out what, what organizations, which churches.
Yeah, we have the community.
Yes, and then have a whole.
All the churches.
Party contacts.
Yep.
Wouldn't it be fantastic to have that list?
For her, especially for one.
Because the people that come in, be able to pass them and refer them to, these are the places you can go, um, for.
You have a pretty good list already.
I have a, I created a, uh, a resource guide for Custer County that also includes some of Fremont County and that sort of thing for different things. It'd be great for me to be able to add stuff in there so that when people come in with a need that, you know, I can't just, you know, give to them right away, that I can say, here, you can.
There goes, is this church or some other organization?
Or you can go see, um, you know, whichever agency or group is doing.
What, yes, yeah.
But your list has to differentiate between those people collecting for others and those people collecting to distribute. So like the Democrats have collected a couple of times and donated to Care and Share. Um, so we don't actually give anybody anything. We give Care and Share stuff.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of the churches are gonna do the same thing.
Exactly the same.
Or individual churches.
Churches that do that, right. So what are we, Pat, what are we doing today?
I would, I would say we put something out saying if, if you want to donate, so we have stuff to give these folks, deliver it to the courthouse, we can store it, if you can work on that, and then we can start reaching out to different organizations, finding out if they have anything in place and then create that list. And then we can distribute that list as well. I think if we just set up something now to get some stuff delivered to the courthouse, then we have oversight of that, and one's every, Vicky.
Right. Okay, Dan, do we need a resolution or just a, a decision that says, uh, of the three of us, uh, agree and support, um, X, Y, and Z for Vicky today?
Right, right now, you don't need a resolution. You can just, you know, say this is what we're doing, issue a press release, encouraging people to do that, or whatever public outreach you want to use.
Okay, so, so the action would be, summarize it, somebody summarize it. I'll quit trying to put words in everybody's mouth. Got it?
Just a motion to encourage the, uh, citizens of Custer County to help those in need at this time of need.
Through a, through a emergency assistant fund, do we need that in there?
No, 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 it's working with, uh.
I would say it's a huge back.
It's working with.
Make sure it's not there.
Work with your, your churches.
All, uh, the organization, churches or the other organizations, and human services.
I just want to clarify.
Now, don't you have a fund you can help anyone with? So if people wanted to make a cash donation to help with food, they could do that.
Not anymore, no.
Um, if I, if I may, Richard.
Who's this?
Um, and everyone, it's Elliot. Um, like I said, the, the Community Foundation is actually soliciting donations. So you can always, and, and what they're doing with those donations is they're turning around and giving it to organizations like, um, Care and Share that are already doing the food distribution and stuff. So you can certainly, like, um, you might, might have reached out to them. Um, and ju- just, just for my benefit, Richard, you have an assistance fund set up for, um, veterans, widows, widowers through the American Legion, right?
Yes.
Are you accept, um, are you also gonna be soliciting donations for that, or is all of that funding coming through, um, other sources?
We funded that through the Blues Festival.
Okay.
So it's funded.
All right, okay, great. Um, yeah, but, uh, the Community Foundation is definitely accepting donations currently. So that might be, if you're issuing a press release, um, that might be something you want to mention.
I think we do. Okay, so the motion is, I move that we, uh, work with the county organizations for, to support, uh, people in need time, uh, especially this time for the SNAP recipients. I want to refer to SNAP specifically, so that those people are covered. And, uh.
General public?
And the general public, and we issue a press release, uh, encouraging people to get busy now, support it.
Is that it?
That's it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Anything else?
Just a comment, did you want to include in there identifying where this support can go to?
Yeah, that's what I pointed out, was specifically for the SNAP.
No, 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 I mean, to the Methodist Church.
Oh, to, and, and encourage that we go to all organizations that are involved, like churches.
Yeah, I mean.
Food banks.
And some work and find out who's doing it, and then put it in your, your press release.
Yeah. Absolutely. And I would like to ask, uh, who, who can volunteer? We got a PIO at the end of the table here, but we need some help defining, uh, the, uh, input for.
Hi, yeah, um, I'm not for PIO, I'm not a parent as a PIO.
No, okay. But we had you doing press releases for us.
I was not writing any of that.
I know, you were, you were getting them in December.
I'm sure I can help keep them, uh, draft.
Well, press release.
We can conquer and divide, figure out who's gonna reach out to who and then make some phone calls. That round, I'll do it again.
Well, I can't speak for the Republicans, but I can for the Democrats, you can put on us, that, us on that list that you can donate to the Democrats.
Sure.
For this purpose.
Okay.
It's a bipartisan issue, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Needs need.
Nobody, he's here representing a group that is collecting.
That is collecting.
That's already collecting.
For this, this purpose.
And the Republicans are meeting, is it Thursday? They are, yes. So anyway, okay, you good?
Do, do we have a current list of all the organizations that are in now?
Vicky's gotta start.
Kinda, yeah.
I know, but I don't have much.
But, but you.
There's a lot of organizations I just do not know about, um, but I see stuff on Facebook here and there.
Yeah, and I, and whatever.
Elliot mentioned the foundation.
And then add, if, if you're another entity that's providing, please reach out and we'll add you.
Please notify us for contact.
I think it's good start to put somewhat of a list together and put it out there and just to take some phone calls or.
No, because Vicky would really like that list. Here's what I can do, and if that's not enough, or if that doesn't meet your needs, here's what this organization is doing, and this is when their code drive is, or here's when they're doing this.
There may be other needs too, like blood drives or something.
Yeah.
So you all have a list.
Your SNAP drive can get, and tell you, uh, what you can do, but.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll call for the vote, all in favor of that motion. Say aye, Lucas.
Aye.
Oh, both on aye.
Can't aye. Okay, so we'll go to work, uh, and, and, uh, you can keep us updated. Like we said, let's get to the next meeting together, let's see where we are. Stan, uh, is it this Wednesday?
Yeah, this, this Wednesday.
Okay, after tomorrow, let's see, uh, come on in, let's talk about it.
Tomorrow's a huddle?
Yep, on Wednesday.
There you go.
So we put in something out immediately asking for donations and who's doing that?
I think we need to do that to, um.
So Caitlin and I can do it, but it won't hit the papers till.
Whenever it is, but it's, what's important is get it online.
But if you send it, like, to me, I can post it on my Facebook page.
Yes. That's the most important.
Dominic, so Caitlin can send it out to.
Well, and the county website.
Yeah, so the county website, you are most important, because that impacts the SNAP guys immediately, and then the rest is.
Yeah, once you guys have done the, I can get it immediately.
Yeah.
So is the Share and Care over here, are they operating every Friday, or what's?
They do the ones.
They're doing it today.
They're there today.
Yeah.
As you speak.
Yeah.
Talked to Cindy, I don't know what their schedule is exactly. I was surprised to see them today. It was every other Friday, but now it's.
Every other week, I believe.
But it looks like it's more often, obviously.
I have a friend that's really involved in that, I'll call him up by now, but.
And then mine's once a month. I mean, if I need to do it more, I can. But that's for Care and Share, so this would be totally different, so I could do that, um, you know, different.
Expect.
But, but, but today, today is ours for Care and Share.
If we're gonna put something out, we're collecting, when would be the first distribution? When would we be wanting to do it?
I think it depends on how much we collect.
Well, now, you've already, you, you can put a thousand bucks in it now. You've got that.
Maybe, I haven't had that meeting yet, but.
Okay, so that would be a new, that would be the seed point, and you could decide when you're gonna distribute it. Just get it on, on your website.
I would just, yeah, I haven't put anything out yet, you haven't spoken to that yet.
Yeah, but if you don't, if you don't specifically put something when you're gonna distribute, then people isn't showing up.
That's right.
Only on.
No, I'm not putting distribution out there. Today's my distribution for Care and Share.
Right, we're talking about this.
Yes, but for this, we're asking for donations, but I can't put a distribution date if I don't have donations.
You gotta have, she has the money to buy the food.
Right.
So if people are confused, that's fine, and then I, then I put it out there that we're having it. But I can't put it out now because I have no donation.
So that's what, that's what the.
Put something in there that we're not distributing at this time.
Well, that's the, what, Lucas, that's the PIO piece, that's the information. It's gonna say, starting today, we're gonna accept donations, blah, blah, blah. Uh, and then at, by some point, uh, Human Services will point out when the food will be distributed. In cooperation with the VFW and the veterans and others.
And I'm sorry, my distribution is not for me, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, I'm just, I'm just seeing, people, people see, oh, they're taking donations, that means they're distributing, and you're not.
Right, you gotta make clear that there, that's not a distribution.
So do you just distribute food?
Care and Share, I just had my delivery today.
Oh, so Care and Share does it, not DHS?
No, Care and Share, the ones that feed and we distribute it, through DHS.
Oh. Oh.
She takes.
So is Care and Share just brings it to the, uh, Custer County Carrying Sharing Center too, that's what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so we have Care and Share as well, so they deliver to both of us.
See, that was the po- problem.
But that is your, uh, so you have clients that you distribute to, or just anybody?
Just anybody.
Oh, okay.
It's not just your clients. Uh, well, you're just building.
They've done it for years.
Learned something new.
Yeah.
So there's another, yeah, all right, so.
Second Wednesday.
So there's another distribution.
And it has a freezer in it, still does.
So I have the building, the freezers and shelves and.
That's been around.
You need to call for volunteers to help you distribute too, probably.
Well, maybe not.
Okay. Any other questions, any comments? Everybody good? Therefore, I adjourn this meeting now at twelve, what is it, thirty?
One thirty-four.
One, one thirty-four. Good job, everybody.
Just for everybody knows, I, I went into a couple of news and they're still debating, so there's no decision.
Yeah, and, and that's what I have to tell everybody that I'm saying.
I just, just monitoring two different.
So I have a proposal for another resolution. Tell those.